I'd like to call the order, roll call please.
Mrs. Blitzen, Mrs. List, Ms. La, here, Mr. Patterson?
Present.
Ms. Elise?
Here.
Mr. Whitcomb?
Here.
Mrs. Ressler.
Here, please step forward.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, moving on to board, can I get a motion to approve the September sixteenth, twenty twenty-five regular and closed meeting minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Whitcomb, second by Mr. Patterson, any discussion? Roll call please.
Mr. Whitcomb?
Aye.
Mr. Patterson?
Aye.
Ms. La, aye. Ms. Elise?
Aye.
Ms. Ressler?
Aye. Can I get a motion to approve the October fourteenth, twenty twenty-five committee loophole and closed meeting minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Patterson, second by Mr. Whitcomb, any discussion? Roll call please.
Mr. Patterson?
Aye.
Mr. Whitcomb?
Aye.
Ms. La, aye. Ms. Elise?
Aye.
Mrs. Ressler?
Aye. All right, next item is communication, any comments from the public? All right, if there are no comments, we will move on to our superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mrs. Ressler. Just two items for the board tonight for me. One, at your table is the twenty-five, twenty-six copy of the career guide. And since we're being recorded, hopefully our students and parents are watching, I would highly encourage the students and parents to sit down and make a lesson of this. It really does have a lot of information that pertains to all of our students. There's something for everyone in here. There's college readiness indicators, what it takes to get each of the levels. There's a career assessment. And for those that prefer still the hard copy book in hand, I think it does the trick. What certifications we offer, dual credit options, and there's a fairly significant bit of information at the back on each of our programs and studies. So appreciate Dr. Williams, Mrs. Mack on their work with their team on this because it really does come out each year and it's a very high level product. So thank you very much for that. And secondly, I'm going to invite up a special guest. We have with us today Dr. Tina Ward. She's from Evergreen Park High School and she is a board member from IELT. IELT is the Association of Illinois School Library Educators and she has a special announcement and some news to share with you.
All sorts of fun stuff. Is this where I should be?
Absolutely.
I don't even know. Fantastic. I'm gonna leave this with you all for a minute, okay? Thanks, guys. All right, so good evening, everyone. I'm Dr. Tina Ward and the Chair of the Association of Illinois School Library Educators, AKA IELT. The School Recognition Committee and also Librarian of Evergreen Park Community High School. I would like to thank the Bremen High School District Two Twenty-Eight Superintendent and School Board for having IELT join you tonight for this board meeting. And to present the IELT Exemplary School Library Award to Oak Forest High School. The IELT Exemplary School Library Award was established in twenty eighteen to recognize school libraries throughout the state of Illinois, which exemplify the Illinois library school standards set forth in the Linking for Learning, which by the way, the librarians have been part of the committee to update those as well. This award is presented to any school library in a public, private, or charter school which has demonstrated an exemplary implementation of the standards. In order to be eligible for the award, a school library must have at least one full-time licensed school librarian. Thank you for making sure that definitely occurs. And a dedicated school library budget supported by the district. Also, thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Additionally, the school library program must submit evidence of exemplary status from the nominee and the district or building administrator. The exemplary school library award committee evaluates the application submissions from school library programs in Illinois and scores the results. School library programs that score at least a hundred and fifteen out of a hundred and twenty-eight possible points are awarded exemplary school library status for a period of three years. Through this award process, IELT recognizes the school library as an integral component of each school, page two, school's learning community in which everyone is a teacher, learner, producer, and contributor. We are very proud of each library program which has received this award. Past award winners include myself, Evergreen Park Community High School in Evergreen Park, Dryden Elementary School Library in Arlington Heights, and Oak Lawn High School, just to name a few. This year, there are four recipients of the award. All of the school library programs deserve this award because their programs embody IELT's values of creating an environment which encourages active participatory learning, promotes reading, and fosters collaboration. The Oak Forest High School Library Program represented these values through evidence supplied by the library media specialist Amanda O'Rourke and Jennifer Shantz. The librarians work tirelessly in collaboration with multiple content areas and using common core and library standards to plan and implement lessons, creating programming that links the curriculum to the interests of the students, not just the students but also the community, and developing a mission, vision, and goals for the library and communicating them to the wider community, all of you. Assistant Principal for Teaching and Learning Ryan Blackwell provided written statements highlighting the support of the district by encouraging Amanda and Jennifer to think outside the box, and in turn, they have purchased for the Oak Forest Library green screens, podcasting machines, and recording devices, which I hear you can hear about later. Spiro robots, Tello drones, and MakerBot 3D printers, and much, much more. Through the librarians' administrators' efforts, the Oak Forest High School Library truly embodies the values of IELT, the values IELT wants to advocate for and recognize as exemplary in a school library program. As an exemplary school library program, we believe it stands as a model for all other districts and school library programs. We hope other school entities will seek to internalize and represent these same values of collaboration in order to empower students with the essential skills to become lifelong learners, users, and creators of ideas and information. Therefore, it is with great pleasure to recognize Oak Forest High School Library as an exemplary library program and thank library media specialist Amanda O'Rourke and Jennifer Shantz along with Assistant Principal for Teaching and Learning Ryan Blackwell for submitting the application materials. We would like to present this award to the Bremen High School District Two Twenty-Eight and their community. Probably display that.
It's like, I'm a champion.
Have a big party? Take a picture of just them. Just them, get them in.
It's got that new banner smell.
Karen Primm. Karen Primm.
This is a big audience.
Get in here.
Thank you, I appreciate it, thank you. Thank you guys for your support.
Oh, one more. Okay, thanks.
Perfect.
Can we talk in whole manner?
Yeah.
I think we should.
If you could just bear with us for one more second, we would like to give a quick.
Thank you.
Okay, we would like to start by thanking the school board, our superintendent, Dr. Sikora, and district administration for supporting D two-two-eight school libraries by providing each building with the staff and resources that we need to thrive. You are supporting literacy, growth, and innovation. Thank you. Thank you to Dr. Boswell for supporting our technology goals and for always asking only one question, how will this benefit students every single time before agreeing to our crazy ideas? Thank you to Jane Dempsey and our building administration so much for not only supporting reading initiatives like Senior Lit Fest, but for always making literacy the goal. That is literally our building goal, literacy. Thank you to the OFHS staff for diving into new ideas like drones and VR and for bringing your classes down for book talks because you keep us in business.
Thank you to the District Two Twenty-Eight Library Department. For sharing so many ideas that inspire us to be constantly evolving and challenging ourselves to ensure libraries are a place for students to learn and feel safe and accepted. Thank you to all of our students for being great human beings. Sharing books, teaching lessons, and even troubleshooting iPads actually brings us great joy. You make each day an adventure. Thank you to IELT for this award and for providing a tool in Linking for Learning that will help us continually improve and strive for excellence. We are honored to be a part of an excellent organization that works to support Illinois school libraries. Last, but certainly not least, thank you to the Oak Forest Library family. Karen Primm, Kim Waikie, Robert Johnson Jr. for making the Oak Forest High School Library a place where students and teachers want to be. This award belongs to the entire Oak Forest community and we have all contributed in such diverse and beautiful ways. We will be forever grateful. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Congratulations. Moving on to our superintendent's cabinet report, point two.
Thank you, Mrs. Ressler. In the area teaching learning, on October fifteenth, the district's AP teachers came together for an afternoon of learning. Teachers were exposed to Albert I.O., which is a tool that personalizes student learning with standards aligned in practice. Several of our AP teachers have used this tool in the past and have seen strong success with their students on their exams. So we wanted to make sure that all AP teachers had an understanding and exposure to the program. The teachers also spent time with Tamika Williams, our college board representative, who engaged staff in a review of their own data from the spring test. And she showed resources that can be used with students to continue building their skills, especially in the areas of free response questions. As of today, we have one thousand one hundred and thirty-eight AP students, that's up a hundred and ten from last year, already registered to take eighteen hundred ninety-nine exams with a hundred and thirty-seven still undecided. This is an increase also in the number of tests from last year. They had until the middle of November to decide without incurring a late fee. Also, on the subject of AP, we like to continue to add blame to our students. So we're going to be adding badges and pins for our AP scholars, our AP Scholar with Honors, and AP Scholar with Distinction. For the class of twenty twenty-six, we already have forty-five scholars. They've earned an average of three on three or more exams. Our AP Scholar with Honors, we have twenty. That's an average of three point two five on four or more exams. And we have twenty-seven AP scholars with distinction who have an average score of three point five with three or higher on five or more exams. And we have an opportunity for those students to earn higher honors based on their test this spring. In school links, three thousand four hundred and sixty-four college applications have been submitted by the class of twenty twenty-six so far, and four hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars in scholarships have already been awarded. And lastly, in our GROW program, we're down to our last seven sessions this semester and we continue to see positive results. Sixty-six percent of our students have shown growth between their pre and mid assessments, not only with the GROW program, but our teachers working hard in the classrooms. We had eleven students coming into the program with failing grades and that's down to six.
The October facility board, or the October facility report, we completed changeover for heat at all four of our campuses. So we are now winterizing our chillers. Boilers have been fired up at all four of the schools, so we're nice and warm now. We are also in winter preparation mode, so we are purchasing all of our ice melt products and preparing our winter equipment for use for that unfortunate snow event. This is probably posted around the corner. And finally, we are moving on from our twenty twenty-five capital projects, which have been closed out. We are now in preparation for twenty twenty-six summer capital projects. They are almost fully completed in design mode, so we'll be sending those out to bid in the next month or so. And bid approval should be coming out after the holidays. That is the October facility.
Thank you. For special education, our district foundations of consumer math students recently took a field trip to Buffalo Loglings to put skills they're learning to the test. They practiced calculating sales tax tips and discounts to explore financial literacy over lunch. Our Excel students are also practicing their skills by beginning the process of planning, budgeting, prepping, and shopping for the annual Excel Thanksgiving feast. So save the date. That is set for Thursday, November twentieth at Bremen. I'm sure more information will be coming about that. And then finally, in front of you is this year's Special Education Department t-shirt. And the theme is Think Differently. This year's shirt pays homage to the vision that special educators, our teachers, social workers, psychologists, speech pathologists, OTs, ARAs, and administrators have to think creatively and outside the box in support of students. Thinking differently means redefining what success looks like for each learner and designing supportive instruction that meets them where they're at.
From the world of finance, we're still keeping a close eye on the property tax delay and keeping in contact with the Cook County Clerk's Office. It is unlikely that we will receive any significant property tax revenue prior to December. Because of this, we did complete a cash flow analysis. As of September thirtieth, there's approximately fifty-eight point three million in operating cash. We still have been receiving our regular EBF payments each month and the final determination was that we will continue to use existing fund balances. For the time being, we'll reassess as should the property tax delay extend longer than anticipated. We are starting to see dispersment vouchers processed through ISB for FY twenty twenty-six grants. This is a promising sign. But no funds have actually yet been released by the comptroller. We'll keep you updated on the status of that for the payment of our grant.
Good evening. The world of personnel, student services, we have the district data retreat scheduled for next Tuesday. Each of our five buildings will have an opportunity to present and share their goals for the year. It's been a successful event up to this point. We kind of revised things recently. There's been a lot of synergy, if you will, on sharing a lot of different ideas amongst all of our buildings. I've been working back and forth with Corey Richardson, who I told you about before, Hillcrest alum, Golden Apple Foundation. We're getting really close to a partnership. It'll sort of be twofold, where they will work with our current students on getting them some opportunities, scholarship opportunities for school, in the hopes that they go and earn a teaching degree and then want to come back and teach in District Two Twenty-Eight. And then also to help recruit area teachers, you know, quality area teachers, not just necessarily District Two Twenty-Eight, to come here and they work on mentoring and work with those people as well. I also recently met with the Director of Educational Administration and Governor State. I sent an email out to the staff today looking to get potentially a cohort going to start building some future administrators in District Two Twenty-Eight. And then finally, I met with Ms. Tanya Brown from La Ribida Children's Hospital last week. She's part of the Children's Advocacy Center. Their mission is to reduce trauma and provide supportive services to children and families related to abuse and violent crimes. Part of Aaron's Law, those types of things that they work with. So we begun planning with Ms. Brown and the PE department for next semester, getting into the health classes at Hillcrest to start presenting some of those different topics to our freshman students. That's all. Board for the Technology and Operations Report tonight, I'd like to introduce a few teachers from our technology committee that are going to share with us some innovative teaching practices that they're utilizing in their classroom. We are going to be using the screen, so you might want to find it if you want to see it. Other lights. Other, other lights. So, board, as you know, we have a technology committee. We've been focusing primarily on AI. But when I set out to find teachers that really exemplify doing like, you know, new things to engage their students and just bring the curriculum to their students, these teachers all were recommended by the leaders in their building. They also all happened to be members of that technology committee, but it just kind of worked out of that way by coincidence. So we're going to start first with Pete Sansoni, a science teacher from Tinley Park High School, who's going to talk to you about how he approaches reading in his classroom.
Again, I'm Pete Sansoni, a teacher here at Tinley Park High School. In my opinion, one of the most important things students get from here is reading and reading comprehension. And in finding reading materials for science class has some challenges. Finding appropriate reading level materials can be difficult because stuff we find is often like college-level textbook or it's elementary school. And finding something that is appropriate and like leveled for our students is challenging. The content is often either not engaging or not relevant to the things that we're currently learning about in class. And it's also time-consuming and difficult and hard to find or create quality graphic organizers or materials that supplement the readings. I've been using a platform, an AI-based platform called Diffit.me that helps me overcome some of these challenges through generating either readings that are sourced, they're AI-generated readings, however they're sourced and factual. It can modify existing passages. I can take my current reading assignments that I have and scale them to a level that's appropriate for our students. And it also helps me efficiently create supplemental, supplemental materials that can help students engage in the reading in different ways and help them improve their reading comprehension. So next, I'm going to show you some examples. All right, so this is the landing page for Diffit.me. Here, you can just, you can fill in the prompt, you can type in and literally put in any topic you want to create a reading about, science or otherwise, and you can scale it to grade, you can align it to standards, it could be anything. I'll show some or share some resources that I've used and created in classes here. So I've used it in a couple of different ways. I have used the AI generation to create reading passages. You read through them, make sure they're factual. They're all sourced and really great readings. I've used it to create, you load YouTube video transcripts, it creates a reading guide that goes along with the video. So students can watch the videos and follow along with the transcripts, and it gives them reading comprehension strategies to go along with it and supplemental materials that can be used afterwards. I've also used it to like level my own reading passages. I wrote an essay for a graduate-level course that was really relevant to the things that we were working on in chemistry class. But it was at a level that just wasn't appropriate for our students. I was able to level it to tenth-grade level for chemistry and then create some supplemental materials that went along with it. So I'll open that here and show you. So it helped me create some like guiding questions for students. It provided a, helped me create a like reading strategy that lets them take notes along the side, like Cornell notes. And then additionally, as I go down the bottom here, it helped me generate questions and come up with vocabulary words that are, that are good for students here. This helps with reading comprehension, to reflect on what they've read. But what I think is even better here is that it helps me come up with questions or gave me question ideas that I probably wouldn't have come up with on my own. As someone with like a science or math background, I tend to be very factual and like to be like to the point. And what this did is it allowed me to like make questions or helped me make questions that have students connect to the material in a little bit of a different way and kind of extend beyond just the straight information. When I ask those like factual, straight information questions, students will often just copy and paste parts of the reading. We use notability in a lot of our assignments. They literally copy and paste and just paste the answer down. They're not creating their own answers. Well, with this, I'm starting to see a little bit more with students actually engaging with the material and coming up with original works and original answers because they're having to think outside the box. So that's helping with their reading comprehension and there's just their ability to engage and connect with this. Here, I'll show like some student workings examples of that. So this was, this was the AI-generated passage. So I typed in, I wanted a lesson on history of chemistry. I gave it a few scientists to hit on, some major points that I wanted to focus on. And here you can see the student like, you know, doing some active reading, highlighting as they, as they go. But what I really want to focus on here is we get to these questions that I mentioned earlier. Here, a student's relating to this. Now, it's not always entirely science, but they're relating to this passage about the history of chemistry in a way that I didn't expect. This student references Romeo and Juliet from freshman year, something they learned in literature class. And they're talking about the things and making connections to, to like what they read. They shared with a partner and thought about how microwave ovens versus how regular ovens work, and they didn't think about that. So they're like engaging it in a slightly different way than just regurgitating information. So I think this is helping our students with some reading comprehension to get them thinking in a different way than they have in the past. Here, they're drawing pictures and sharing ideas visually. Again, just engaging with it in another way, just kind of extending that reading comprehension. Thank you, Jim, for providing these, these materials for us and like giving us access to this platform.
Thanks for sticking to your time limit.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Pete. You know, just again, as an example, it's, it's, it's also across our curriculum. If students start to see the same kind of materials across English, science, math, social studies, it really creates that consistency as well for our students. Next, board, I want to introduce Kelsey Peña, an English teacher from Bremen High School, to tell you about how she's used Magic School to help engage her students.
I'm going to stay under the timeline. So Magic School's a program that a lot of teachers use in a teacher-facing way. But tonight, I'm going to show you some of the tools that are more student-facing. So four of them that I like the most are the Character Chat Bot, where students can chat with a literary figure or historical figure, Robot Version, the Writing Feedback, where students can get immediate feedback on their writing, the AI Tutor, which is exactly what it sounds like. Students can get individualized support on any topic or subject. And then the Research Assistant. I use the Character Chat Bot a lot for a bell ringer or to introduce a topic or to get them prepared for a quiz. So this is how I set it up for them to chat with Reverend Paris when we were reading The Crucible. You'll see that Robot Reverend Paris speaks as if he's from the time period. And then, Mr. Boswell, if you could click the example. This student was chatting with Reverend Paris before her quiz. And I was able to put in information about what, what's on the quiz. So that Robot Reverend Paris could kind of help them focus on specific parts of the text or characterization or plot. If you scroll down a little bit, you'll see that he continues to engage with, he being a robot, continues to engage with the student and clarify some questions that she had about the text. Another one I've been using is the Writing Feedback. We've been using this in addition to paper.co. The cool thing about the Magic School Writing Feedback is it's immediate, so students can copy paste their essay and they get feedback right away from Magic School. As a teacher, I'm able to upload the prompt in the rubric and then students just have to put their essay in there. So the bot, Magic School knows what my expectations are for the essay. If there's something in particular students are struggling with, I can tell Magic School that and they can focus on that and get feedback. This student, as you can see, they got flagged for violence. That's kind of awful too, though. Magic School will flag if they're being inappropriate or getting off path or flirting with their robot. So I love the way Magic School organizes it for them. It gives areas of strength, areas of growth, and then specific mechanics. This student in particular did such a great job chatting with the bot. She clearly didn't understand MLA citations, so she was able to go through a conversation and figure out exactly how to do that. Obviously, this is a conversation I could have with a student, but when you have thirty students in a class, that's not always realistic, so this is a great alternative. The AI Tutors are a cool one. I actually learned about at our tech committee meeting. We had a teacher on the committee use this while we were out and had subs. So he put his assignment in and the students worked through the assignment with the AI Tutor. I did it for our Frankenstein quiz last week, so I uploaded the quiz and then the students could chat with the tutor to prepare for their quiz and to clarify any areas that they didn't understand. The last one is, we just used this week in my class. This is the Research Assistant. Sometimes with our students, they're overwhelmed by Google, so when they're starting a research paper or a research project in Google, it's too much. So the really cool thing about the Magic School Research Assistant is it gives them sources that they can use that we know are credible and on topic. So this is a cool one, too.
Board, next, I want to introduce our recently award-winning.
Whoa, that's a lot of pressure.
High school IMC team, Amanda O'Rourke and Jen Shantz, to talk about how they utilize podcasting to plus up lessons across the school.
Isn't this neat? Like, aren't you just curious automatically? And this is the same kind of effect that having these cool toys, Dr. Boswell. And this is the same kind of effect that having these cool toys, Dr. Boswell, has on students. And this is a quote from the creator of Serial. I don't know if you ever listened to that podcast. I felt like I had lunch with her for a few years in a row because I had to know what was going to happen at the end of her investigation. And it's really amazing to see something that is so prolific in the real world and be able to share it with students. And not just listening to podcasts, but creating them. That is the magical difference. So why podcasting? As a classroom teacher, you would hope to do these things in maybe a couple weeks, but with a podcasting lesson, you can do these all in one activity. It's ridiculous. You can research and organize, it's creative, it's it's different with every single group, even if they have the same topic. Kids get to explore their own interests, and it's trying something new. Like when you rolled this now just in the center of the room, imagine having a whole room filled with tables with podcasting equipment. They know something is different. You move the desks in a classroom, they're like, hey, what are we doing today? And with this, it, even though the equipment is professional, it's not difficult. The the most fun part is showing them the old-fashioned symbols for like play and pause and record that I grew up with on my boombox, but we actually have to teach that to kids. And the novelty of it makes part of the magic happen. And there's so much you can do with this, and it applies to so many subject areas. So the technology, and the magic of this is the interface. We lovingly call it Zoom because that's what it says at the very top here, and when you turn it on, it says Zoom. So we call our P4 interface lovingly Zoom, and it plugs into our microphones and our professional headsets. And the magic thing is, the recording is done right on the interface. Like I said, all I have to do is teach the kids to hit the red button to record and to pause, the little two slashes, right, and stop with the square. And then they have recorded a podcast. And we just, we transfer it into their Google Drive, the Chromebook powers it, and we are rolling. Like, it's just, that's why we can do all of those amazing things in such a short amount of time. And then everybody gets to share it in the group. These are Oak Forest kids sharing their Google Drive, and they all can have the responsibility together. Sometimes group work, it's one person who does it all, right? But with this, everybody can contribute. And everyone's voice is heard. It's amazing.
They look like they're posed, too. These are like legit kids.
I swear, these are. Look, there's Mr. Gorney in the middle.
That's our group.
Coach Gorney's in the middle. He jumped in with the kids because they were having so much fun. I wish I could tell you, I don't I don't have a recording of it, but I wish I had one to show you the minute that they put the headphones on and they hear their own voices and it played back, it's magical. Seniors are giggling. It's it's just so much fun. But you don't have to have the cool equipment to do this. You can record using your iPad, you can use any voice recorder, there's tons of free ones that are out there, you can use your iPad, but there is something magical about using the equipment. And it's wonderful because it's something we can use in every subject area, and anyone can do it. Here's some examples.
Yeah, the equipment really does level it up. We always call that, it's our like our next level podcasting. Yeah, and kids know it, it's so much fun. And it's also gotten us like so much business with this podcasting stuff because people come in and they see another class doing it, and they're like, we have to do that. Kids literally do it in class and then go bug all their teachers, can we do a podcast for this? We've had teachers who do projects and offer podcasting as an option, and so far, 100% of the time, every group chooses podcasting. We don't have any more video projects or written, they they want to try this because it's so cool. We do have someone in almost every department, we're working on fine arts, but I mean, like they do all of this face-to-face, like the interaction kind of stuff all the time. So they're our only department who hasn't done podcasting already. And when I say every department has done it, I don't mean one teacher in every department has done it, we have multiple teachers using it in all different ways. So there is a lot of overlap here, but I wanted to highlight just some of the ways that each department is using it. History is, they're they're big. They'll they'll come in for one-day projects. We also have media's influence on history. They podcast every single week. There's a podcasting week, and then the next week they edit, and then they they podcast and they edit. But integrating podcasts in their history curriculum has allowed students to level up their speaking skills as well as research planning, technology, editing, and just that really, really fun factor. Health, health classes come down, and they're actually, I love this one, because this is students teaching students, they do podcasts and then share that Google Classroom folder of what was submitted, and other students listen to each other's podcasts in order to learn subtopics within units. Super cool way to have kids teaching each other. Language arts, obviously, research and writing, okay, goes right into that. We've had language arts teachers use podcasting as their assessments as well. Think AP classes, right? How many writing samples are you taking? How many in-class essays? We have a teacher who actually gave the prompt on the day of the podcast, so kids had no warning what it was going to be, and then they practiced speaking their answers back and forth, right? Guaranteed original work. World Language, that one's pretty obvious, and EL, they use it all the time, and they'll come in, sometimes for impromptu, just conversations, it could be an assessment, and sometimes they plan it out, so they're using it all the time as well. We also have CTE, they really help to get podcasting off the ground, to be honest. Sports and Entertainment Marketing does a project-based formal assessment at the end of the semester. They do a really big video podcast, which, you know, one of our very vocal teachers will tell you is the future of podcasting, he's thrown some video in there as well. Internuership classes, they do an internship at Oak Forest High School, and we claimed in a group of students, we said, you know, give us some some social kids, and they've actually started an Oak Forest podcast called Into the Forest. I couldn't have come up with that, I think that's really super cool. They'll be on the next slide, actually. But they're making a school podcast about things that they really care about, and that's something that we hope to continue, not only through this internship, but through our tech team and just students who come down and say, I hear you have podcasting equipment, can we use it? Our answer is yes. Science, Environmental Investigations does a portfolio podcast. We also have Biology classes talking about cells next week. Don't, I mean, follow up with me if you want to know about that. We just do the equipment and we do intros and outros and that kind of thing. I don't know how you're going to have a podcast about cells, but I'm sure it's going to be super-duper cool. And then extracurricular even, we've got, the Venus website is our school newspaper, and they do a podcast once a month, okay? So that's posted online as well using our equipment. So all different kinds of really, really cool ways to incorporate podcasting, and it's just so fun. Like Jen said, our very favorite thing is the first time they put those headphones on, and they're either just laughing hysterically or pointing at each other or going, oh no, I hate my voice, which I can totally relate to, right? So it's it's just a really fun way to get kids to come out of their shells. Another thing teachers comment on all the time, you have kids in class who don't want to participate, put them behind a microphone, tell them they're not on video, and all of a sudden they come to life. So very, very cool stuff.
Board, lastly, I want to introduce Heather Castaneda, who's going to show us or share with us how she's used creative AI tools to help her students engage with the material in her English classroom.
Hi, everyone, thanks for having me. This is one of the other AI tools that we were introduced to by Dr. Boswell. It's called Suno AI, and you get to create your own music. Our students love hearing songs, they're always, they always have their headphones on, so we know that they're listening to music, and why not have them create something that they can do, even if they are not strong when it comes to lyrics and things of that nature? So what we did is, I introduced the unit to the students as soon as they came in, I have freshmen, all freshmen this year. Yes, I'm still smiling. They are scared when they come in, they don't know which direction they're going, so I said, why not create a song that will give them their high school mantra? Why not give them something positive that they can turn to when they're struggling? It's it's a whole new world. I said, you're going to get lost, you're going to get lost again, and then you're going to get lost one more time, and then you're going to realize there's an upper orange, and then you'll find me. So I had our students create mantras. I focused on my skills group first. The second hour they came in, we did the mantras. Jim, if you would click on that link. Each one of them were able to That's okay, that's okay. Our mantra as a as a whole for our skills class at Hillcrest was watch us, watch us be successful, watch us do the things, and we're going to scream it from the rooftop. If anybody has ever spoken to me at school, they know how I feel about my kids, and they were able to showcase what they needed. They needed that extra push, and sometimes us adults, we're just not as cool as we think we are anymore, and they don't want to hear what we have to say, so they created their own. This tool is very simple. You log into suno.com, you are Suno AI, and then you type in what you want to see, what lyrics you want, if there's a certain genre that you want to hear, you can put it to a certain genre, you can have it just be instrumental. So these are our SEL songs to get the kids pumped up, so when they come in the morning, I have our playlist going when they come in to do their bellwork, so one of their songs is playing, and then they try to figure out whose is it, whose is it? And sometimes they'll own up to it, other times they're like, I am not putting my business out there right now, this is vulnerable. But they did a really great job, there were lots of different genres. Some of them even went like super-heavy rock, and I was like, I'm listening, this is different. But they really do enjoy it. But not only is it good for our SEL goals for our students, at Hillcrest, you can use it in any classroom. So being a literature teacher, Jimmy, go back to the next one, please. I have been able to get the students to write poetry and not be stuck. I don't know what to say, I don't know how to do the next part. Well, tell them what you want it to sound like, tell them what you want it to feel like, so teaching mood and tone, this has helped immensely. In a history class, you could do like the historical events, like a rap battle in history. I'm not a history buff by any means, I'm not going to pretend to be, but if you put it to music, I bet you I'm going to remember it. Science and breaking down those concepts, the microwave to write, do the things and how Thank you, I am an English teacher for a reason. But with that, the harder concepts, if you put it to music, we're going to remember it. So, and then of course, in language arts, just building fluency, we can improve our vocabulary and be introduced to some some language that we wouldn't necessarily see or understand. So it has been, it has been fun. We are starting our Civil Rights unit just this week, and I am having my students try to create a mantra from one of our characters, but having it set to that 1950s, 1960s feel, just to set that tone in our building. And a lot of people pop in and they're like, what are we listening to today? And I was like, oh, this is so-and-so's song. But it has been fun, the kids really do enjoy it, and I mean, who doesn't love music? So that's that's what we've been able to do over at Hillcrest. Thank you, go Hawks.
Board, just to summarize, you know, when you think about technology, you know, 10 years ago now, we rolled out iPads for our students, and I feel like it's very easy to think of them as a replacement for paper and pencil, but technology really just gives access to so many different modes to engage with students, and seeing what some of our teachers are doing in our buildings is encouraging for working out just now. So thank you for your, for listening.
Is that everybody in the cabin too far? I don't want to speak to you, I always say Thank you. All right, moving on to our principal reports.
Good evening, from Oak Forest High School, a few things happening. We are starting to wrap up this fall season of sports, and so in girls tennis, we had Maddie Moody and Haley Plankarte won the SSC Conference Championship at First Doubles. They finished third at sectionals and they qualified for state. Our girls golf, freshman Kelsey McGrath qualified for state, and unfortunately, she missed the cut to make it to Day Two by just one stroke. A freshman, though, so that's really exciting. Boys cross country, senior Nick Manso won the SSC Blue Individual Championship with a time of 15 minutes and 47 seconds. And junior Hudson Math finished second overall with a time of 16 minutes and 6 seconds. Our girls cross country, we had senior Amelia Zwalinski placed in the top 10 at the SSC Blue Mead and earned all-conference honors. Our football program started this season with a 7-0 start, and until they ran into those mighty Hawks last Friday night, so we're just hoping for everyone's support on this Friday as we battle with our nemesis, the Lamont out there for the conference championship. So good luck to all of our athletes on Friday night and our new head coach as well. We, a couple little announcements, our trick-or-treat, anybody that have littles and want to come out this Saturday, that's always a wonderful time, we have that from 9 until noon this Saturday. Hopefully, the weather will cooperate, we'll be outside in the parking lot and then in the building as well, lots and lots of activities and lots and lots of candy. And a preview of our radium girls, our play will be performed on November 7, 8, and 9. And last but not least, I wanted to preview something, and I'm only going to give a preview to it, and next month I will give you a little bit more information about the first, the first publication of it, but we have started a new, a new initiative called Beyond the Stripes. We've got Into the Forest going on, we've got Beyond the Stripes, all these catchy things, right? And that is, the purpose of that is it's been posted to Facebook, we're publicizing that, and that is highlighting our Bengal students who are doing some kind of extra-special and unique things. So that's just a preview of it, and you'll understand next month why, why I postponed the rest of it until, until next month. So next up, Hillcrest.
Good evening from the Hawks. We had a late homecoming this year, and it was a success, a successful week, with a liveliest pep assembly followed by our annual homecoming carnival, where students had a chance to socialize, play games, and sample a wide selection of culinary delights before the football game, which ended in a Hawk victory. The dance was a night to remember, we had over 500 students in attendance this year, and if you've ever seen a Hillcrest dance, you know the students came dressed to impress. Couple invites here, please join us if you can tomorrow night for our National Honor Society induction, 6:00 PM, we will be inducting 44 students tomorrow night. Also, our STEM night, our annual STEM night, will take place on Thursday from 5 to 7, led by our Science Department. Come out for a night of, night with the community and do some hands-on experience and see some exotic reptiles and more. Congratulations go out to a couple teams here for our Athletic Department. Our flag football, our girls won SSC Conference and regional championships. They had a great season, unfortunately, lost a tough one in the sectional finals. We do have a state tennis qualifier, freshman Jemaya Hill placed third overall in the girls tennis sectional, and will now complete, compete at the state championship beginning on Thursday. Last but not least, Mrs. DeForty and myself had the opportunity to meet with Country Club Hills Mayor James Ford and City Administrator Brian Mitchell. They agreed to help us with our attendance and registration initiatives this year and going into next year. They will be posting anything we need posted with regards to those on the marquee on 167th and Pulaski, and in the process of building another one in the village as well, so they've agreed to help us out with that. But the best news that came out of that meeting was, we were told that they are going to put in sidewalks in front of Hillcrest from 175th all the way to 169th, where, to meet up with the other sidewalks that are already there. So that's, that's a huge deal for us because we've had some, some accidents and things that have happened with students, but tremendous opportunity to make our, our campus safer. That's all I got for you, and as always, go Hawks. That's all I got for you, and as always, go Hawks.
Good evening from the Bremen Braves. I'm gonna start by recognizing Mr. Salgado and our Bremen marching band, who recently competed at the Mount Zion Marching Music Games. They finished third for Class 4A and sixth overall, which was a great accomplishment for them. Our color guard numbers, in partnership with the marching band, have really grown under the advisory of Ms. Peterson. They actually won Best Auxiliary in Class 4A, and they earned the highest score at the entire contest for the first time in Bremen history. So that was really something for us to celebrate. As Hispanic Heritage Month came to a close, our Bremen Fuego and Mariachi band were invited to perform at a few of our feeder schools. So they took their talents on the road to visit Kolmar and Keller last week. They of course represented us with pride and put on great performances. But a really cool kind of full circle moment for us was at Keller, one of our former grads named America Mata, who I think probably got invited to a board meeting back in the day, and you guys probably met and saw her, is now a social worker at Revis High School. And she was one of the first students that Ms. Martinez, Ms. Ortega had on our original Fuego dance team. She has now started her own Latino dance group called Ritmo Latino at Revis. So this was their kind of first time getting out there and performing. We also have a number of former Fuego students that are teachers now at Keller. So just coming together and kind of seeing the full circle moment of kids that we had in class that are now leaders in education and really inspiring the next generation was really rewarding. Unlike a few of our neighbor schools, our head coach Connor Downs, he's had a rough football season or two. But Connor Downs, our head coach, did pick up his first career win last week. We've had some really tough losses. One being our homecoming game, I know we had a lot of people come out for homecoming. But some things that, that stand out for us is just the culture that he's building with our kids. He's really, through the adversity and through two not really winning seasons, it can be hard to keep morale up. And he has had a great emphasis on culture and building young men to just be great humans. So I just wanted to share, we've received two different emails after Friday Night Lights games. And the one most recently came from after our homecoming game where we lost the game, we went up, we lost in the last like two minutes of the game. But we had an email from an alumni from the class of 85 that shared that after the team came off heartbreaking devastating loss, one of our seniors, Christian Zarate, went over to the alumni tent where we still had a huge gathering from the class of 85, and shook hands with all of these alumni that were there, kind of reliving their glory days. And just thanked them for coming and talked about how much it meant to see them come back and kind of support Bremen High School and the football team. So, you know, getting emails like that where people take the time to send an email to recognize that, I think those little pieces have helped us keep the focus on, we're doing good things here, we're raising great young men. Same thing after our Oak Lawn game, another tough loss there. It got back to us through an email from an old alum that the referee, one of the referees was a pastor at church and spoke about it at Mass. And it, long story short, went through about three different people where they recognized one of our young men, Arian Ayers, for his leadership on the field. So through the community out in Oak Lawn, they shared it and it got back to us. And so while we might not be winning all of our games this year, we're really growing and raising great young men. And that's a tribute to Connor Downs and the work he's doing with his whole staff. Finally, some big excitement penciled in on your calendar. November 6th, Bremen High School has been selected to be highlighted or really serve as the CBS spotlight. We will be on the news all day, starting at about 6:30 in the morning. CBS will be coming to Bremen, highlighting many of our programs, athletic teams, different classes. So we're looking forward to kind of showing off the building. There'll be a few segments in the morning and then a few after-school segments as well, highlighting activities and the opening night of our fall play. Thank you.
Good evening, board, how we're doing? First of all, I would be remiss to not at least mention congratulations to Oak Forest on your award. I have to say, I have the privilege of working with our library department because of the support from Dr. Boswell and Ryan Blackwell. These ladies that are here today, we just had Renee over this morning to talk. Amanda and Jen have been also over this year so far as well to do book talks and to introduce some apps and technology to our students over at Delta Academy, so they're still getting that IMC feel even while they're over in our program. And I really appreciate that partnership we've had, so very well deserving of it. Thank you, ladies. Since you guys have seen me last, I have passed out the Delta Academy newsletter for quarter one to kind of recap all of our highlights that we've had so far, as well as a flyer from our career fair that we hosted last week. Dana Dogrich, our counselor, this is her third year hosting our career fair, and it was her most successful one yet. We had over 30 vendors, we have 33 vendors in attendance that day from local trades and opportunities within the services. One of our former students is at the SSC Barber College, and so it was really just a full circle moment. She's pictured on the front, just to see her. She said that she heard that they were coming over to do a career fair and to try to encourage kids to be part of it. And she had to sign up. Because of that, we're also piggybacking off of when Hillcrest was using before for the haircuts on wheels. So they're gonna be coming over and she said that she's going to make it a point to make sure that she's there so she can service some of her former classmates from a few years ago when she comes by. If you want a full list of vendors, I left that with Dr. Williams, and she can pass along as well if you want to see who came out for us. But that was pretty exciting, that was something that was attended by all the students in our program, whether they were in Delta Achieve and even TEP, they came through and they were able to meet with vendors. She created a scavenger hunt for kids to go to encourage some of our shyer introverted students to be able to have prompts for them to encourage conversations, especially with the areas of focus that they have identified through their surveys and their interest inventories with her, so it was very successful. She's already talking about how we're gonna make it bigger next year. I asked her if she was gonna plan on like blowing up one of the walls there because we were pretty cramped inside of it. But if I know Dana, she will figure out how to have tons of, yeah, exactly. So we will have more than 33, I'm sure, next year. Also, thank you for the addition of a social worker, Molly Feige started with us last year, so we kind of let her ease her way in and she was getting used to the ropes. But this year, she is hosting her first Hello Week, start with Hello Week. So today was our tie dye day, she's going in, we had posters put up all around. And all of our students were leaving positive messages for each other and what encourages them while they're at school. Pretty overwhelmingly positive, so we're gonna kind of compile all those together and post them to our Instagram. So you can see what our students have to say about school in general and what is motivating them to continue while they are with us. Our goal, as you will see in our newsletter, for our attendance is 75%. To have all our students in here for 75% attendance in October. So this year, we are, this month, we're doing a trick or treat incentive to encourage our students to come in every day. And you would not think that little bags of candy would inspire high school students to come on time, but it does. So that is working out very nicely. And also, since the newsletter has been posted, I just wanted to let you know, we have 88 credits recouped. Since then, it's up to 119 credits that we have recouped as a program. And we have had our first four students take and pass the food handler certification. Thank you, Dr. McCasa, for your assistance in getting that going as well. Christina Del Rose started that for us, we're doing another one next week. And then the next month, we will focus on CPR serves for our students to get certified as well. And a little shout out, because I don't think that most times when a dean comes over is usually good news. And she'll probably be mad at me for saying this. But Dean Fluhart came over today just to pop in and say hi to some of her students. And unprovoked, as I was going to get my cranberry fruit snacks from the lunchroom today, I had two Oak Forest students come up to me and say that their whole day was made because their dean came to visit them. So I just think that was fantastic. And I just wanted to thank her and thank Oak Forest, and I popped by just to say hi. Again, I've never really had deans come over and kids are excited about it. You know, usually it's that nervousness, but it worked out very well, so everything is going well. I hope you guys have a great night, Dr. Nolan.
Thank you, all right, good evening, everybody. Sorry, I'm a little bit under the weather, so my voice might be a little crackly. But I'm not doing most of the talking tonight anyways. I'd like to give a shout out, first of all, to our Timmy Park High School band, who is actually right, they're playing at Harmony Square. If you haven't been to Harmony Square in Timmy Park yet, pretty amazing place. The weather was just beautiful tonight, you know, just sort of an outdoor concert, it was great. Didn't help the cold very much, but just a shout out to our band. And to see the parents out there, just, I just crack up band parents. Are some of the most committed people ever, in their blankets and their, their hoods and their umbrellas and out there, you know, in the rain and the wind, it was, it was beautiful to see them on stage. But then you look at the parents all bundled up, it was very funny. But tonight for my good news report is, you know, you've heard a couple different times, mentioned about AP classes. And you know, always, my birthday is July 5th. Always around my birthday, AP scores come up. And I know that because I, back in the day, I taught AP English. And I would always wait and see if it can be a good birthday or a stressful birthday. Well, let me just tell you that I had the most amazing birthday present this year. And that birthday present was given to me by the people who are seated right up here, and there's a few that are missing. And I think it's always really important, especially for the Board of Education, to understand that when we talk about numbers and we talk about growth and we talk about achievement, we talk about success, for you guys to see the faces behind the people who are responsible for that. I know I get up here and summarize and kind of give you, you know, some highlights of things that are happening here at Timmy Park High School. But the very fact of the matter is, it's these people that are seated right here in front of you that are in the trenches every single day pushing our students to, to achieve things that I don't even think they believe that they were ready to achieve. I'm not gonna give away all of the highlights, I'd first like all of you guys to stand up. And they're loving it, I know they're excited. And I would just like to have everybody introduce themselves first. And then we're gonna segue into a few highlights as to why my birthday this year was remarkably successful. So, Meg, go ahead.
Hi, everyone, my name is Megan Implema, I co-teach a few math classes here at Timmy Park High School. I have one of my own. And then I provide academic intervention for reading and math foundational skills.
I am Rachel Han, I have all of our AP math classes here at Timmy. So AP Calculus AB, AP Calculus BC, and AP Precalculus.
She works hard.
And I'm Channing Gormley, I'm one of the counselors here at Timmy Park High School. I'm also intern principal this year. And I have the good fortune to work with these amazing people and collaborate with them and how student services can help support them.
I'm Jeanne Unick, I teach Studies in English for freshmen, honors, and AP Literature and Composition.
Dan Unick, I'm sorry, I've got the same voice. Same voice right now. Social Studies, I teach AP American History and AP American Government.
I'm Jim Morell, I teach AP Physics C, this year it's Mechanics, and the freshman physics class.
Renee Younger, I taught AP Literature and Composition last year, and then I, the rest of the time in the library.
Salima Baktiri Galaji, I run the entire French program here at Timmy Park High School, from Level 1 all the way through AP French. And last year, I also taught AP Spanish.
Hi, I'm Cassie Beans, I run our Strength and Conditioning Program, I teach Power Strength.
All right, and I have a few people, I'm gonna save this for just a second. So the reason why these people are absolutely remarkable, our, our AP scores have never been higher than my entire time here within the district. And that's been a long time, seeing that I retire in next year. And the fact of the matter is, is they, they know how to get kids to achieve. They know how to, you know, our, our theme this year is raising the bar. How do we increase rigor in the classroom, which doesn't just mean more rigor, just make things harder. But how do we raise rigor in the classroom? How do we raise that bar, those expectations for our kids, so that they can truly succeed, you know, beyond their years here at Timmy Park High School? We see this being done with this very group of people right here, and I know Ms. Gaines here, she, she teaches Strength and Conditioning. And you might be going, well, do we have AP PE? We, we don't, I mean, I'm sure she would love to have that. Well, what Cassie does is, she runs our VFS program, our Strength and Conditioning program here at Timmy Park High School. And you wanna talk about somebody who sets a bar and then trains and coaches, I almost say athletes, I know there are students, but those athletes to meet those expectations. And she does so by her sixth consecutive win of the district BFS, BFS competition every single year. So when I say that, she knows what it means to set a bar and then do everything to ready her students to attain the level of achievement that she sets. I love that their book ends here. Megan Implema is one of our special education teachers. And no, she doesn't have any AP classes, but I'm gonna tell you what. She, her expectations of her special education students are mind-boggling. Not only does she use data to make her decisions about her kids, not only does she test them along the way, she uses so many different platforms to make sure that her students are getting exactly what they need, and she doesn't settle for anything less. I, I joke and say, not only does she know everything about them academically, socially, emotionally, I think she knows their blood type. And so, you know, when, when the administrators are meeting over the summer, we're trying to say, okay, the common theme, our, the feedback from our staff last year was, how do we raise the bar? I mean, I don't like to say a word, but COVID's over, you know, we need to get back, we need to ready our kids. We need to make sure that they're academically ready for whatever their next step is in the world. How do we raise that bar? Well, I didn't have to worry if Dr. Calhoun had the answer, or Dr. Calhoun had the answer, or Ms. Bumpis, Mr. Granite, because we know these guys have the answers. So what we did is, we turned around and politely invited them, in the summertime, just after my birthday as a matter of fact, to come to this summer meeting and talk about, hey, how do we raise the bar and will you guys be in charge of that with your peers? And you know what? The resounding yes echoed through the rooms and therefore our whole school improvement efforts are all around how these professionals who get the job done, and Steve Grant's gonna share with you some of those numbers, how they are going collectively as a group within their peers, raise that bar together. And the bar that we're trying to raise is a, is a pretty big, heavy bar called the ACT. You know, all of our kids, it's hard to measure grades, it's hard to measure just attendance, because those are things that are a little bit, they're not necessarily mean attendancees. But some things aren't necessarily consistent across the board. But how can we look at academics across the board, not only across the board, but across the schools, across the state? And how, how are we achieving when it comes to raising that bar and achieving that academic rigor? So all of them spearhead a group of our school improvement team. I guess they're, they're coaching their peers and sharing some of their talents in the classroom, some of their strategies in the classroom, to help their, everybody's students kind of set that bar and that bar is the ACT. We hope that our kids, we've, we've done some survey work that, seeing that we, this is only our second year doing the ACT, you know, many of our teachers aren't familiar, we did the SAT for so long. So we're kind of reinventing our strategies in the classroom, more of a peer-led group, with the hopes that collaboration takes place, observation takes place, more professional dialogue takes place. And then maybe as an end result, see that, that ACT bar move higher. I'm gonna have Steve just share a couple results here that will tell you why it was such a nice birthday on July 5th. Thank you.
Good evening, I have the privilege of sharing the success within our AP program. You have packets, I believe? Do they have packets?
Yeah.
The data's in there, I'm just gonna cover, there's some that's not in there, so I'll cover it here. Past several years, we've had number of AP students increase. We've had number of test takers increase. We have number of past exams, past exams increased. All the while, enrollment is not increasing. So it dipped a little bit, but our numbers keep going up. There were over 6 million tests given last spring across the country. The average pass rate is about 60%. What does that mean? You're getting a 3, 4, 5 on an exam, and that's considered passing, okay? Out of a five-point scale. 60% nationwide. Wait for it, Timmy Park High School, 75% pass rate. It's an incredible number. I, I try to go back in College Board, I can't even go back that far, and find a number that equates to 75%. So again, congratulations. Our African-American population, 70% pass rate. Our Hispanic population, 70% pass rate. Incredible, again, numbers. Corey mentioned AP scholars. Forty-six AP scholars we got last spring. That's passing three exams. We had 15 AP scholars with honors, passing four exams. This number's mind-boggling also. Twenty-six AP scholars with distinction. These students passed five exams. First of all, I can't imagine taking five AP class level and passing five exams. Again, if you're a parent, even if that, you know what that equates to, passing five AP exams. You're practically a sophomore, you know, going into college. A few other data points throughout the department. Lee Rosinsky, AP Chem, had 100% pass rate. AP Chem, not an easy test.
Three years in a row.
Three years in a row. Kelly Deutsch, AP Bio, 89% pass rate. She's consistently in the high 80s every year. Jeanne Unick, Renee Younger, AP English Lit, 88% pass rate. Sheila, Sheila Lorden, AP English Language, 93% pass rate. Rachel Han, who's our, teaches in the hall.
All the math.
All the math. Has AP Precup, 80% pass rate. And I don't need to tell everyone, she's a newbie. She's a newbie in our district and just doing a great job. Dan Unick, you- Dan Unik, US History, eighty-six percent pass rate. Adam Priest, AP Art, a hundred percent pass rate. So these numbers are just unbelievable, off the charts. Very, very proud of this group, proud of their students. We applaud their efforts and we just want to thank you.
Congratulations. I'm just going to steal Principal Shannon here for a second because she has a message that she would like to share with you guys about the teachers that stand here. A little bit of a personal connection here before we wrap it up.
So before, so I'm going to step out of Principal Shannon role and step into parent Shannon role. I have three students that have gone here to Timmy Park High School. Two of them have since graduated and have had the good fortune of working with most of these individuals. And my daughter is a sophomore at the Milwaukee School of Engineering and is doing very well. My son is a freshman at Marine Valley studying, believe it or not, he took calculus. He promised me last year I'd never taken calculus. I don't know how to do calculus. And then I have a junior who's in four AP classes. I can attest to the fact that these individuals work very hard with their students, they care, and they make sure that they're ready for the next step. And I'm very grateful to everything that they've done and all of their efforts, not just with my kids, but with all of our kids. So.
That's just my parents.
That's why I think it's so important for you guys to put some numbers with some faces, because they're the ones getting it done every single day. I do have Kelly Deutsch, Ryan Honan, Sheila Lorden, Adam Priest, Lee Rozinski, and Chris Ben, who weren't able to make it tonight, but they deserve that shout out. They deserve their time in front of you guys. And like I said, they know how to get it done. So we're sending them out to the rest of the troops and say, let's get it done together. So we'll see how it all pans out and looking forward to my next birthday. Thank you.
I think that's all of our principal reports. Thank you very much. Our, moving on to Agenda Item 4.4, our FOIA requests.
Thank you, Mrs. Ressler. Since the last regular board meeting, we have received the following Freedom of Information Act requests. W. from AACCL requested records detailing discussions about formally recognizing the month of September as World Suicide Prevention Month, September 10th, 2025 is World Suicide Prevention Day, and two, the Missouri Department of Mental Health as a state government agency, which has in the past formally commemorated World Suicide Prevention Month by proffering specifically named advice. There were ninety-three pages that accompanied this request and it's been completed. James Wooton requested Timmy Park High School Clubs Budget Donations and Expenditure Reports and Timmy Park High School Activities Budget Donations and Expenditure Reports. This has been completed. Michael Ross, Allium Data, requested copies of our current property and casualty insurance policies, including premium information or a summary document that outlines coverage, carrier, limits, deductibles, and premium. This is completed. Sarah James, Employee Data Analytics, requested a copy of listing of all of Bremen Community High School 228 employees, including first and last name, email address, title, position, primary campus, department location. This has been completed. James Wooton requested Timmy Park Club Transaction Reports and Timmy Park High School Activity Transaction Reports from July 2019 to June 2024. This has been completed. James Wooton requested all board policy and district expectations for the use of club and activity budgets, all board policies and district policies regarding school sanctioned fundraisers, personal business, professional business, and sick days used by administrators from Timmy Park High School from 2019 to 2025 school years. This request has been completed. Steve Watts requested public records for our current employees at Bremen High School District 228, specifically looking for the following information: full legal name, job, title, enroll, official work, email address, assigned work site or campus, current annual salary. This has been completed. Owen Wang from South Cook News requested the names of newly inducted National Honor Society members from our high schools, names of National Merit Scholarship Corporation finalists, if any, from our high schools, and the names of National Merit Scholarship Corporation winners, including semifinalists, commended scholars, et cetera, from your high school. This request has been completed. James Wooton requested personal business, professional business, and sick days used by administrators at Timmy Park from July 1st, 2019 to June 30th, 2025, specifically the dates of any sick leave, personally, vacation days, or other approved time off as requested. This has been completed. James Wooton requested Bremen High School principal expenditure reports to include budget, donation, and transaction, club and activity reports that include budgets, donations, and transactions, Bremen High School athletic financial reports, expenditures, budgets, donations, and transactions, and Timmy Park High School concession sales reports. This request has been completed. W. from AACCL requested disclosure of records detailing discussions about the decision of the US government to designate the month of October as Cyber Security Awareness Month. Commemoration of the month of October is Cyber Security Awareness Month and the terms and conditions of any written contractual agreement concluded between local and state government, the Department of Justice, and the Federal Bureau of Investigation. This has been completed. And finally, Yuran Zhang, SEIU Local 1, requested the current contract for food services and custodial services, including value and expiration dates, and any renewal staffing numbers for food service and custodial service, and if those employees are covered by a collective bargaining agreement, if so, a copy of the CPA. This has been completed. Thank you.
And you know what? I have teachers that probably have lots of planning to do for tomorrow morning. I know most of them have seven AM classes. You, you are dismissed.
You may stay with your.
You're welcome to stay.
I do want to say thank you for coming though. Really, I appreciate you. Thank you.
Any board member reports?
I'll say really fast, spent most of my day on Homecoming Friday at Bremen. Fortunate enough to be the Hall of Fame inductee this year. It was great to be back. Still have, I think still have six teachers in the building from when I was in school. So we're, we're asking you that at a point where I'm officially old in that building. Thank you to Brody Lynch, the media intern, for catching what passes from my good side in the videos. It, it's nice to see how it's evolved over the year. We didn't do the Homecoming Assembly outside on the football field when I was there. So I definitely provided a different vibe. And Coach V has not changed at all. But thank you, thank you for the welcome. It was a good time.
One quick thing. Just one thing, Dr. Sikora and the principals that allow us, myself and TJ, to use buildings, for the walkthrough. One thing that was really important to see was every school that I went into, it was different. Nobody was robotic. And I really want to say thank you to everybody that allowed us in there and gave us some nice stuff in the meantime. But keep on doing what you guys are doing. Brilliant job. I brought it on.
I do want to thank Dr. Nolan for inviting the teachers here and all the teachers that showed up from the library, the AI users. I really do appreciate you guys taking time from your day to come to our board meeting. And it is nice to put names and faces together and be able to personally thank you directly. So thank you, you know, when you do come, I really do appreciate it. So thank you very much. Any other board member reports? All right. We're going to move on to new business. Dr. Morrison, Item 5.1.
Item 5.1, Bills Addendum to Bills Payroll and TDS Bills. These items are being recommended for full board approval.
So moved, second.
Moved by Mr. Wickholm, second by Mr. Patterson. Any discussion? Roll call, please. Mr. Wickholm?
Aye.
Mr. Patterson?
Aye.
Ms. La, aye. Ms. Elise?
Aye.
Mrs. Ressler?
Aye. Item 5.2?
Item 5.2 is the tentative tax levy for 2025. This item is being recommended for full board approval.
So, second.
Moved by Mr. Patterson, second by Mr. Wickholm. Any discussion? Roll call, please. Mr. Patterson?
Aye.
Mr. Wickholm?
Aye.
Ms. La, aye. Ms. Elise?
Aye.
Mrs. Ressler?
Aye.
Item 5.3, Dr. Williams?
Thank you, Mrs. Ressler. 5.3 is the welding MOU between District 228 and District 510 as presented at Committee of the Whole. This item is being recommended for full board approval.
So, second.
Moved by Mr. Patterson, second by Mr. Wickholm. Any discussion? Roll call, please. Mr. Patterson?
Aye.
Mr. Wickholm?
Aye.
Ms. La, aye. Ms. Elise?
Aye.
Mrs. Ressler?
Aye. Item 5.4, back, Mr.?
Mr. Ressler. Item 5.4, bids were solicited for work at the building located at 17101 Seventy-First Avenue in Timmy Park, Illinois. Proper legal notice was issued. Bid solicitation was for base bid and alternate work detailed adds. Base bid, demolition of approximately twelve hundred, twelve thousand, six hundred square feet at the main level and renovation of new offices, workstations, storage, conference room, and public boardroom. Alternate number one, demolition and renovation work for approximately twenty-five hundred square feet at the lower level for workstations and offices. In alternate number two, furniture install, alternate electrical power service utility and switchgear configuration. Bids received and reviewed to the low responsible bidders are as follows. Bid package A01 for demolition, contractor Midway Contracting Group LLC, base bid eighty thousand dollars, alternate one, eight thousand dollars. Bid package A02, plumbing, contractor Chass F. Bruckner and Sons Incorporated, base bid of one hundred and thirty-nine thousand, nine hundred and ninety dollars, alternate one of seventeen thousand dollars. Bid package A03, electric, contractor Glow Electric Company, base bid of four hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars, alternate one of eighty-one thousand dollars, alternate number two of fifty-seven thousand dollars. Bid package A04, mechanical, contractor Quality Mechanical Incorporated, base bid of two hundred and sixty-nine thousand, nine hundred and seventy-five dollars, alternate number one of thirty-eight thousand, nine hundred and fifty-seven dollars. Bid package A05, fire suppression, contractor Nelson Fire Protection Company, base bid of eighty thousand, eight hundred and thirty-nine dollars, alternate one of fourteen thousand, five hundred dollars. And bid package A06 for General Trades, contractor DBM Services, base bid of nine hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars, alternate one of one hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars. These bids are being recommended for full board approval.
So moved, second.
Moved by Mr. Wickholm, second by Mr. Patterson. Any discussion? Roll call, please. Mr. Wickholm?
Aye.
Mr. Patterson?
Aye.
Ms. La, aye. Ms. Elise?
Aye.
Mrs. Ressler?
Aye. Moving on to personnel recommendations. Mr. Towner?
Thank you, Mrs. Ressler. Under retirement, Maria Hernandez, FMLA Lees, Nicole Kavoris, Colleen Kaneki, and Arig Devane. Maternity leave, Paige Ancona. Medical leave, Vanessa Solis. Leave of absence, Jasmine Tolberg. Resignations, Eden Robodeo and James Cozy. Employment, Kelly Jacob, Christina Rogers, Eric Nunez, Chris Martins, Terrence Clark, Jada Clayton, and Lawrence Morakel. And approval of administrator contracts for Dr. Rozinski and Mr. Meany. These items are being recommended to the board for full approval.
So moved, second.
Moved by Mr. Wickholm, second by Mr. Patterson. Any discussion? Roll call, please. Mr. Wickholm?
Aye.
Mr. Patterson?
Aye.
Ms. La, aye. Ms. Elise?
Aye.
Mrs. Ressler?
Aye. Our announcements are as follow. Our next regular board meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, November 18th, at 7:00 PM at Bremen High School. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved, second.
Moved by Mr. Wickholm, second by Mr. Patterson. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, guys. Have a wonderful evening.